But she said if you put the arrows in my files. We just said. If Bill has it. On the other hand, that's the truth. Bill has a copy of. So that's, that's what this is about.
This, as I know, that's, the audio was not really.
This is Article two, what's the article ones? Isn't there one, isn't there two?
Yeah, we don't have them. This is just the one that came in yesterday. Yeah. Oh, yes, I did, I gave it to you. Yeah, I did, I'll give it to you upstairs, if you want it now, I can.
I just want to make sure, well, we can.
You want the, the other one?
I just want to make sure we have both of them. We're going to have both of them and I don't know.
Bill?
Yes, yes.
Do you know, do you have that from?
We have Article two, but you have Article one on this.
The other one? Yes, yes. I like to see that little arrow.
There we go.
Yes. When you get boarded in on the seventeenth, is it possible?
On the seventeenth?
Well, on the eighteenth.
Yes, I can come in the morning.
Before the meeting, okay, thank you. That way you're official.
I can come in first in the morning.
Being seven o'clock, I'll open the meeting, we just, I'm trying to get a little more organized, that's all, so, I apologize for having to be.
Okay, because it's official.
She's here early in the morning, I.
I mean, we have to do a letter, but it's official.
You can have Neil Bill's anything that we have to open with.
We can, we can always, we have fifteen minutes, so we can.
We have, we have, we have, um, we hope we're not doing this.
Well, we have no letter from our attorney, you can take that up.
Is there not even?
Yeah.
I think that is on.
Oh, okay.
Seven, the fact of your.
It's so beautiful.
Um, can you receive, passing the copies down, we received a letter, um, from Lori Dagnin from Osford Road, um, and I'll read it, and then we can, um, discuss what we would like to do with it. Dear Mr. Skim, I am writing with regards to your request to pay the advertising costs associated with this citizen's petition for the Sola Moratorium presented at the town meeting of two thousand and eighteen. The amount of one hundred and twenty was quite unexpected, and whether it be one twenty or five hundred, we were not notified of any fee during the entire process. I reviewed the board's selectmen's policy number eight regarding citizen petitions, and no fee is mentioned. The planning board's webpage lists seventeen fees, and that also does not list any fees associated with citizen petitions. While I understand you are all asking five oh eight to do the same, I believe this citizen petition is much different than others that may be for the benefit of a particular company or group. This article provided no financial gain for any of the signed petitioners. Our action information brought insight and valuable information to your board, board of selectmen and residents. This article would not have been necessary if the former planner took action back when the state provided recommended guidelines to reasonable regulate, to reasonably regulate Sola back in two thousand and fourteen. I respectfully request that this fee be waived and your webpage be updated. If I do not receive a response in writing by August first, I will assume this matter has been rectified. Sincerely, Lori Dagnin, one oh six Osford Road in Charleston, Mass. So, the issue.
So, right, by this, you know, we've had three citizen's petitions so far. We had the five oh eight zoning change, the Sola Moratorium, and then the recent one to rescind the bylaw. So, in each case, I've notified the applicants that they should pay the public hearing fee. It seemed to me that they were requesting the town to perform a service like any other applicant, and it only seemed fair to me that they pay the cost of that public hearing fee. But since we've gotten some pushback, Mr. Russell, who submitted the bylaw, the request to rescind the bylaw, and Mrs. Dagnin, both feel that it's the town's responsibility to pay for those public hearings. So I wanted to bring it to your attention, and have you decide whether you think the applicants should pay when they submit a petition for bylaw change, or whether you would agree with Mrs. Dagnin that it's part of the town's responsibility to pay that cost.
What has council said has happened previously? What is typical in this case?
I haven't asked town council, I think it's a matter for the town to decide, it's not a legal question.
What has the town done in the past?
We have always, we have always just had people pay in the past. So, um, what, what this letter says is that, it's not in writing, we just automatically assume it's for them and they pay. Because it's not in writing, um, I feel that we should just waive the one hundred and twenty in this case, because I don't think we actually have a legal standing to collect it, since it doesn't say we, that's a fee.
But it's not just a one twenty.
Specific, it's just the one hundred and twenty.
But you have other people who are going to come back now and say the same thing.
Not, not, I mean, not.
Well, I mean, I, I agree, I think.
If you do it for one, you cannot do it for.
And Mr. Jennings paid the legal ad fee for his zoning change, so we have to refund him, or give him a credit for that.
Correct.
Well, obviously, we've had zoning changes in the past, and they've always paid, and there's a history.
Yeah, I don't know that.
So that, I think that's what we need to do.
I mean, it seems just fair to me.
It's not fair to do it for some people, but not for others. So, if it's something we've done in the past, then we should, we should continue to do that, but document it, but if it's not something that we've been regularly doing, to penalize somebody for that penalty.
So you would suggest that perhaps we have a policy to require that in the future, and that?
No, I think she, I think everybody should pay, my feeling is, everybody should pay it. They've always paid it in the past, they should continue to pay it in the future, and maybe they'll think twice about just doing things, because we're, we are going to get in the hit with special town meetings, which is a cost incurred, which nobody pays for, we pick up the tab for everything. And, and it's all because of citizens' petitions. So, yes, I think they should pay, I'm sorry. They've always done it in the past, and how many are going to come out of the wall and say, well, back ten years ago, I filed one and I had to pay, I want a reimbursement? I think you're opening it up for a big thing, if you don't.
Yeah, but we need to make sure that it has been done in the past, and that we've actually collected.
And we have collected, I, I don't, in the past, I don't think we've ever not, I think we've always just charged, just that it's just not, it's just not in, like, it's in, and technically, I mean, what happens, do we go to small claims court with this? I mean, and I'm just trying to simplify, just for the bigger process, do we, do we push it, do we, do we waive this and clearly state we're not waiving anything else? Everybody, do we, does anybody owe anything right now?
Well, there are two that are, that haven't been paid yet. Mr. Jennings paid his.
But there's two other ones that happen in this one.
Right, Mrs. Dagnin, of course, you had that letter.
Right.
And Mr. Russell's also checking for the fee.
Okay.
And I think it's fair that if, it would go to small claims, a judge would look at it and say, well, the precedent is based on past experience, the applicant has always paid, so therefore, they should have to pay in this case.
I think the judge would say, um, it's not written.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
It's not written, I mean, do we want to, do we? And from here forward, I mean, now we have it in, 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 in minutes, and from here forward, it just, I just, sometimes it's, doesn't make any sense to bring it through court, and if we could just kind of fix it and waive it and get it, and, and then going forward, as of right now, there will be nothing, and we will not reimburse anybody for their fees.
Can we check with town council, just see if that's acceptable?
Can we get advisement from town council then?
Sure.
Sometimes it just doesn't make any sense to go through all the motions for some, for small little dollars, by the time, if it goes to court, the, the cost of even getting there and sitting there is kind of not worth it for a hundred and eighty, but you'll get, can we request some?
Sure.
I think we have to ask Robin to ask town council, just, just to make sure, that's just my feeling, and we'll see what he says, and whatever his, he advises, we'll just follow it, that makes any sense, just go with the attorney.
Go with town council, absolutely.
We, I got it.
If you don't get any response back, because she's given me a deadline of August first.
I don't think she can do that.
Well, um, I know I've done it in the past with things, you know, if somebody's.
And I can respond and say, we're looking into it.
Exactly, exactly. If you don't have a firm answer, at least tell them that, um, we're checking with the attorney, and we will get back as soon as we receive an answer.
We have a meeting again next week, maybe we can discuss it.
Um, ma'am chairman, the seven oh five meeting with content review planned with it by Main Street, they're not ready to meet this evening, so they asked to meet another time. It wasn't a public hearing, so we don't need to continue, we're open or anything like that, which is the pre-application review meeting, so when they're ready, they'll get back in touch with me, and, um, and we can schedule that again. For a piece of mail, don't know if you wanted to mention this community outreach meeting, we received that.
Legal notice of community outreach meeting regards adult use marijuana establishment proposed by Four Score Holdings LLC. Notice is hereby given that a community outreach meeting for Four Score Holdings LLC proposed marijuana establishment is scheduled for July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven P M. at the Charlton Town Hall, thirty seventh Main Street. Proposed marijuana cultivator, marijuana product manufacturer, manufacturer retailer, and manufacturer transporter is anticipated to be located at one forty fourth Sturridge Road, Charleston, Mass. Community members will be permitted and are encouraged to ask questions and receive answers from representatives of Four Score Holdings LLC. A copy of this notice is on file with the town clerk, the board's selectmen's office, and the planning department, and a copy of this notice was published in the newspaper of general circulation, and mailed at least seven calendar days prior to the community outreach meeting, two letters of the proposed address of the proposed marijuana establishment, owners of land directly opposite on any public or private street or way, and letters to the, butters within three hundred feet of the property line of the petitioner, as they appear on the most recent half full tax list, notwithstanding that the land of any such owner is located in another city or town.
She's having a hard time hearing you.
So this just says that there is going to be a public hearing for the, for the next marijuana cultivator that's, that wants to come into town, and it will be on July sixth at seven P M. at the town hall.
July sixteenth.
I'm sorry, sixteenth, at the town hall. It doesn't say where, I'm assuming in the selectmen's office? So next Monday, there's going to be a meeting for the next marijuana grower that would like to come to Charlton.
What time?
Seven P M. at the, in the town hall on the sixteenth, so Monday, seven P M.
That obviously, of the last two, we've had a big crowd, yeah.
We're just, we're just passing information along.
Do we just get notified usually, like everybody else does, and we're just, um, making sure that the word is, is.
I believe there was a legal notice in the paper, too.
Yeah.
You can check with the town hall, check with the.
It's not actually a town requirement, it's a state requirement that they have a community outreach meeting.
Uh huh.
So they are fulfilling their requirement to do that, it's not sponsored by any board of selectmen's meetings, they are just doing this on their own, so you're welcome to attend and find out what they propose to do.
Doesn't appear the facility's going to house enough people, I think is an concern.
The auditorium, the last time they had.
Twice.
Yeah, last two times.
Yeah, I, we have no say whatsoever, but you know who would love your say is the selectmen, you can call their office, all of you, and you'll all get answers.
I have four things, if you like.
Well, it's seven sixteen, so we can go on, so we can do the Sunset City.
Okay.
Being seven fifteen, um, we have the continued.
If you're here for Sunset City, please sign in.
Because it's a public hearing, we need to sign in, so you know. So we had a couple of things to go over, and one of them was the approved uses, do you want to go through the latest graves?
They, a couple of issues I think remain, one, you know, the approved uses, make sure the board is comfortable with more people doing, I'll talk about parking, and then noise. So, in your revised site plan, you noted on the plan, you low impact, medium impact, and high impact uses. So the question to the board is, are you comfortable with those? Are you on suggesting the changes? Because once you approve the site plan, then those uses noted on the plan will, will be permitted. So I think, I want you to be aware of that, and make sure that that's what you're comfortable with.
I know we have read through and, and discussed some of these activities at the last meeting, too.
I, in my opinion, those are consistent with settlement agreement that the town and.
Five oh eight base is in your name? It's been the name of the venue itself.
So, I mean, I think it's consistent with what, um, what we had agreed to, but again, it's to you as site plan approval authority to agree with that. So.
I would think that, you know, looking at the different activities, the higher impact activities might require more infrastructure built to.
Well, they will only take place within the loop area, so we're, that's already been handled up, so that's correct.
So all that is going to take place over here?
The high and medium only will take place in those, in that specific location. And then the other low impact uses could take place anywhere on the site.
Which is part of that original contract, that, that, the agreement that was signed.
Yes, yes.
So this, as far as you look at it?
It, yes, it does seem fine to me. I would recommend that you.
It agrees with, with the, okay.
We had a letter from Mike Andrew, um, I think it was June fourth, I believe we ran a talk to him at the last meeting, but I wasn't at. There seem to be a couple of issues here that had been fully addressed, so maybe we can go over those again, see if they've been taken care of. Number one, um, there were some changes made in the field, which are more as, as, as-built kinds of, um, things that should be shown on the asphalt plan, so Mike is suggesting that you submit another plan set with those field changes that have been approved and made, so that we have a current set of, of plans as-built.
Just, just for my clarification, Bill, this is the letter that Mike submitted prior to the last meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that we did go over with you guys, so it's Mike was.
So have you, are you okay then with, with making, with number one, making those changes that you've already made in the field?
Yeah.
They're just not showing on here, correct?
Right. Three A, uh, the plans show onsite parking for three hundred and fifty-seven vehicles, including oversized spaces for motor crossriders and trailers. Under the settlement agreement, uh, the Tough Mudder and Spurtrac races are allowed to take place before the issuance of a modified site plan approval, provided that the applicant prepare a plan for overflow parking for town approval. Seems likely that these types of events, and perhaps others, will more often than not require off-site parking. Have you talked about how you're going to accommodate events that have more parking than you have three hundred and fifty-seven spaces?
Just as we discussed at the last meeting, and what actually happened, um, if there's a situation where we require off-site parking, we're going to do a traffic plan with the police department, um, that was discussed with, um, everybody, and it's, um, what actually happened was a Tough Mudder event.
How'd that go?
Excellent, yeah, very well, police fire, very happy with the way things work.
Yes, you do have a letter, an email from the police chief regarding, and he, he felt there were some minor issues that could be addressed in the future, I mean, it's a learning process, if, if issues come up, uh, you can make changes to make it work better, but I don't think he saw any serious problems with the parking and traffic situation, although there were some complaints by residents who probably have a different perspective, but the police chief seemed to feel that it was.
We weren't allowed to speak last week, last meeting. So we couldn't tell you the complaints about parking and traffic.
That was before the event was held. Our last meeting was before the event was held, so you couldn't tell us any problems, because it hadn't happened yet.
And we were here at the selectmen's meeting.
Guys, we, we really just need to rein it in, I, I, my, our goal is to leave on time, I, and it, we just need to get through this stuff, and then if there's time for questions, well, we can get.
Why can't the public debate?
We will, we will, but we want to, let us, let us get through.
Their new proposal, it's a new proposal.
Let us just get through the pieces, and then we can ask some questions, we did, we have, we have other things to go through, and then we'll, we can discuss some stuff.
So there is, there is a question about, um, an area that you don't have marked as a parking area, but it's been cleared and sort of graded to accommodate off-site parking, do you intend to use that as overflow type parking, or?
You're talking about twenty-nine A eight parcel?
It's sort of adjacent to the, sort of.
This area right here, that cleared spot.
So what's, what's your intention with that?
Our intention with that is a hay field. In two thousand and fourteen, the Jennings submitted a use change with the assessor to go from forestry to pastoral agriculture, so it's been changed over for quite some time. Right now, it's in the process of being prepped for the fields, and just like any other field in Charlton, occasionally it might be used for overflow parking, but that's not its primary use, and certainly wouldn't be a regular use.
So, it might be used occasionally then for overflow parking, do you have a particular concern about that, or are you okay with that? So, how often do you think that would be necessary? How often do you anticipate the three fifty-seven that you have?
A few times a year.
And that's, you know, the, the problem with any grass field parking, whether it's carpenters lot down the street here that we use for Old Home Day, or, um, the fields over here at the Maynard Field, when we have Home Day, or Blueberry Festival, or anything else, uh, number two schoolhouse, the field's there, it's always the same question, weather permitting. And sometimes your plans don't work out, and you just have to find alternative locations, and that's why Spencer Fairgrounds are available, South Fairport, things like that, so when we say we're going to have a plan, um, for off-site parking, or for parking, that's typically what we do, so.
Is that something that is, when you discuss your, the, the plan with the police department, is this something that is also discussed and handled with them, so?
Absolutely.
If you, if you say, you know, we, we're going to need some of this overflow, if they're going to be part of the whole process?
Yep. On the last one, just to put in a side note, um, weather is always an issue, so one of the things that, um, the people who were leasing out the venue from us did, Tough Mudder, was they actually contacted the schools, so they said if we're going to need, um, asphalt parking, weather permitting, we'd like to contract the schools, so they reached out to schools, and, you know, we see that as part of ultimately the benefit coming to town, if we can, you know, shuffle along in that direction, we want to do some scholarships or something, and everybody's happy, so.
Well, not everyone. So then if you could just make a note on the plan, what intention is for that area, so that future boards would, will know what that use is intended for? So that intended as a hay field, but maybe occasionally used for overflow parking?
Sure.
Okay. The issue of off-site parking, you know, the town bylaw requires for independent parking over five or more spaces that you get, um, either a site plan or a special permit, depending on the district, and it's not allowed in the agricultural district. So anytime you intend to have off-site parking, where you might bus people in, you need to check the zoning bylaw to see whether that's permitted in that particular district.
Maybe.
Okay. I, I think that's about it for Graves Engineering Review. Do you have any other questions on the site plan before we get to the minority issue?
We're also with the approved uses, we, we talked about that in detail at the last meeting, um, the, is everybody good with the parking? I, I think all of us, the occasional overflow, I think that should be, and it was like, those might, as long as it's not from the plan, that's good, and you now wanted a.
So, I do have one question, what is considered occasional? If there's ten events there a year, and eight of them require off-site additional parking, is that occasional, or is that?
Would you like to define that term?
It's a, I'm not trying to, I think we should define it.
Do you have a suggestion?
Some sort of definition of, of what is occasional, so that it's not all the time, it's not every event, it's not, you know, on, otherwise, there needs to be site plan in the board.
Right, okay, Mr. Blair, what?
So the only number that exists to define temporary right now is one hundred and eighty days, which is half a year. Our intention is not to use, uh, or to need overflow parking for half of the year, like we said, we're looking at probably a few times a year, if that, uh, to have overflow parking, and if you're talking about off-site parking, that's outside of the site plan, that's outside of the property, so it could change from one event to another, depending on who's leasing it, or what their needs are. So like Russ is talking about weather conditions being a factor, so they might need paved parking, if it's not a factor, they're looking at fields, but it could be in Sturridge, it could be in Spencer, completely out of Charlton's jurisdiction, and the only thing that we're looking at is actually reducing the traffic, because then people are being bused in fifty at a time in one vehicle versus single vehicle truck. So, it's actually a benefit to the area to have that off-site parking.
I'm not sure if I, I agree with that, if that's, if the, if that's that you're having or monitoring continual off-site parking or parking fields or whatever, then this will lead to less traffic, so I'm not sure, I, I'd agree with that.
I'll clarify, too, that, um, you're, you're talking about events, and we do intend to be open for daily operation, so the parking that is already specified in the site plan is more than enough for what's needed for daily operation? Just like you're looking at the schools, right, they have so many parking spots to accommodate what they're expecting their tenants at the school to be on a daily basis, but then you have town meeting, and you have cars piled up across all the lawns and, you know, the sides and everything, and that's, once in a while, that's not something that needs to be considered for site plan, if you're going off-site, you're not even looking at the school, it's really hard to link the two together.
But I think, I think the point is valid, there should be a limit to how often you use that, unless, if you want to call it a permanent overflow parking, then I think it needs to be designed that way. It's only going to be occasional, we need to know what, what that means.
But, Mr. Blair, you're talking specifically about off-site.
I'm talking about off-site, or, or the temporary parking that you.
I think, yeah, we'll talk about temporary parking, because, yeah, the, what we call the bylaw called independent parking, as I mentioned, has to be allowed in that particular district, and then that's really a traffic management problem for a police chief.
I mean, if, if, if you're looking for a number, I could, I could honestly say, if we use it a dozen times a year, I'd probably be surprised, so that field across the street, it's like, that's once in a great while, so.
So you're saying, under ten?
I'd say ten or twelve is a more than reasonable number, naturally, from a business perspective, I'd never want to limit myself too severely, um, and say occasionally, you know, what does that mean, so?
If temporary is one hundred and eighty days, then you cap it at fifteen, to kind of split in the middle.
It's ten percent.
And plus, we have the, we have the police takes discretion of making sure that that parking is adequate, safe, and.
And plus, we have the, we have the police takes discretion of making sure that that parking is adequate, safe, and, you know, and, and, we know that, we see the letters how detailed the police involvement is at these events.
Absolutely.
So because it's being so monitored, I like regulation, but we gotta be careful to over-regulate and say, oh, you only can have 10 events a year, sorry. We gotta, we have to be careful to have that balance.
I agree.
So, I mean, on the plan, you can identify it as the hay field and overflow parking.
Well, questions? The hay field, generally, I can say overflow parking areas would be used more than 15 times a year.
I think it is not into our advantage to make them gravel that up or pave that. We don't want, we don't want our land to be covered with pavement. I mean, if it doesn't have to be, because you have cars parked there 10 times a year.
Right.
At least that's my opinion, if I'm honest with the board. And if we start defining this up as a parking area now, we're gonna start having the guidelines that, you know, gravel or, you know. I just don't think that's the benefit of the land to take away from just open field. I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that, but that's my opinion. And to let the police department's discretion.
Have them do what they do best, exactly.
That's their job, you know.
Okay. Going on to the noise issue, I think you got a copy of the memo from James Philbrook, the health director, regarding the noise issue. Do you want to read it?
I, we, at the last meeting, we had, we had some complaints about when there was noise, that there was nobody to call, and nobody came, and people were on vacation, and backups and everything else. So as we discussed, we contacted James Philbrook, the health director, to ask what the process was and, you know, what our role, what his role was. And we got, who's gonna be the response, everybody grabbed a copy. The Board of Health or its, I'm sorry, to the planning board from James Philbrook, regarding those noise complaints. The Board of Health or its agents will perform, oversee, or provide instructions for all noise level measurements. As an option, the board may require the party responsible for suspected excessive noise to hire a qualified sound engineer to undertake a study to quantify noise emanating from the premises and subject a written report of its study to the board. Noise level measurements will employ appropriate equipment that is properly calibrated to industry standards as noted below. Noise levels shall be measured on the A weighted scale of a noise meter at a distance of 50 feet from the source or at its various distance from the noise source, or from the boundary of a property used for residential purposes, or any combination of these, and shall include measurement of pure tone if appropriate. The precise locations of the measurement sites, as well as date, time, duration of the noise and noise levels measured, will be recorded in a manner that is acceptable to the Board of Health and will be made a permanent part of the Board of Health records. For the purposes of determining sound levels as set forth in this section, the following guidelines shall be applicable. All persons conducting sound measurements to assess compliance with this section shall be trained in the current techniques and principles of sound measurement equipment and instrumentation. Instruments used to measure sound level shall conform as a minimum to the specifications of American National Standard for Type 1 precision or Type 2 general purpose sound level meters. The sound level meter to be used for such measurement shall be capable of measuring and displaying values of the equivalent sound pressure level and the maximum sound level weighted decibels for established noise limits. The following steps as listed below shall be followed when preparing to take sound level measurements. The instrument manufacturer's specific instructions for the preparation and use of the instrument shall be followed. The sound level meter shall be calibrated before and after each set of measurements. Ambient background sound level shall be measured with the sound level meter for slow response. Impulsive noise shall be made with the sound level meter set for fast response. Do you want me to read through the thresholds? It just, the level, it isn't about more processes, it's about the daytime hour levels, nighttime hour levels. I don't, I don't think anybody really wants to hear me just read that. So what they're saying is that it's pretty much the Board of Health is the, the board that handles these problems, these complaints, and they do go out and they test when there are complaints. I know the, the issue was that there was nobody on call, and that might have just been a, a day that there wasn't coverage. There's supposed to be coverage all the time, and when there's nobody to receive calls, there are backups. So I guess the, the question is, what, from here, do we do with sound? So what?
Well, do you, do you have any questions or comments about what Mr. Philbrook said?
No, I have absolutely no objection to Mr. Philbrook being the presiding authority. He is, or that's the law, that's the way it is, and there's, we have to abide by the rules of regulations, just like everyone else.
So I think the way you described it is accurate. If there's a complaint, then it's directed to the Board of Health, who will undertake sound measurements. There's a state standard threshold here, which if they're exceeded, then they're in violation, and then they would be subject to whatever penalties the Board of Health might impose.
And it's saying that if there's, if, if, if there's so many of these, that we as a board can come back and ask for a test. Am I reading that right? That it says that as an option, the board may require the party responsible for suspected excessive noise to hire a qualified sound engineer.
That's, your first, that board is the Board of Health.
So, so.
The first sentence is the Board of Health, so then it's the board that could.
So if there's so many complaints, they could force a task.
Does, does that require 508 to go before the Board of Health, before it has one of these high-impact activities or that might create excessive noise? Or is that, they're just?
I don't think, I think it's only if there's a complaint, is the way I'm reading this. So the law does set up structure. That's what it creates, but I'm glad that we finally have it.
It says that they, they do all the tests, they go out, they follow all the guidelines, and then if there's, if it's happening too much, or is that, you know, they can, they can go ahead and hire an engineer to do that study. And we already, we did already do a little study. Might open up questions, comments, or how do we do it?
I guess if the board has any other comments, take that structure.
I just have one comment. I don't think we clarified it when we were talking about the occasional use of the overflow parking. And Don, or Ross mentioned something like, you know, up to a maximum of 15 times. Is that believable? Okay, whoever did, I thought that was a good round number and.
Somebody has to count, guys. I assume that's the police chief.
I would suspect the police would be the best counters.
Is that, is that forever? I think that could be a working number, because if, if 15 becomes, so let's say 10 years from now, 15 is just not enough, because the business is growing. I don't think this needs to be something that is concrete. They have to come back before the board and have that discussion. But kudos to them if they're doing so well that 15 all of a sudden isn't too small.
But to that point though, I think if it's necessary, they should redesign it as a parking lot.
Okay.
With appropriate drainage measures.
I don't see it as a hard number unless we put it in that way, but more of the guideline so that it's, if it's continually used and it's noticed, it's.
I like that. Exactly.
And that's something that we would just be, be noted, because that would be a change of use, which would have to be brought back for us. Does that make?
Does that sound acceptable?
And because we'll have so much police involvement, and this will be applied with them, there could be a point too where, you know.
Absolutely. They're not gonna do this unnoticed.
Yeah, nothing will be unnoticed, guys, so. Now, let's, do we have any more comments or questions? Let's open it up and get some, and listen to some of the police signs. I know we have an email from the last.
I do have one question before we go. So in the last meeting, there was some talk about fencing between, on the property lines and the wood just between the neighbors. Has that been addressed, or?
Yes, two, two issues. One, this is a letter from our environmental consultant about finishing off the last remaining item on the site plan, which is the wetland replication. And then here's two pictures, and we'll send along others of the firewall fence that was installed on property line. So that it's a definite deterrent from crossing over in the future. We're gonna make up some little signs that say 508 boundaries.
It would be a deterrent.
It's understandable that, you know, people are out in the woods and, okay, we all, we all know a stone, the stone wall is a boundary. Other people may not, so.
Barbed wire is the less fun to get stuck on top of.
Barbed wire might be worse than electric.
Yes, I would agree.
The, this letter states that the, the rest of the, the final wetland replication has, has been complete, so they're all on, aligned with all of the, all the environmental stuff.
Yes, they, they had submitted a check, asked security for completion of the wetland replication. So as soon as we hear back from the conservation agent, then we can release that security.
And you'll do the signs too, soon?
Well, yeah, and good fences make good neighbors, so.
Can we keep these?
Yeah.
You good with that?
Yep.
I know there's a lot of motion, so can we, I'll open up to questions, but can we keep them, you know, on, on the subject?
Bob Brunel, Brookfield Road in Charlton. Couple of questions. I'd like to know if any sound mitigation structures have been put up for the high activity events that are being planned? And if not, is the planning board gonna provide some sort of restriction or requirement that it does not, any activity in that high-impact area does not exceed the DEP limit of 10 decibels over the ambient? Because it is gonna affect 200 or so families located in Sturbridge and along Brookfield Road.
That's an excellent point, and actually, that was just addressed by the letter that we read, because that is a Board of Health purview. And although we cannot put in sound structure, it's a reactionary process. So until they do something bad, bad, we can't do anything. And we're going to assume that they're not going to do anything bad. Unfortunately, it's the same as you can't be arrested for speeding until you actually go over the speed limit. So per the Board of Health, per that person, that's under their purview, not ours.
Okay, so you're electing to take an approach of non-proactivity here.
Well, they did the original sound test, which, that's the original baseline. And I don't think anything has changed structurally, has it?
Actually, there have been, there have been some modifications from the original plan. And one of those is that, and I'll just point it out to you. And maybe Mr. Brunel would like to actually see it himself. This area here has been lowered a lot from the original plan. This is the area that's closest to Brookfield Road, okay? So what you have right now is you have this type of situation right here. So this embankment is about 30 feet high, so it's a natural sound, at this point in time, right here in this corner. Right here, goes like this. So it actually kicks the sound this way, to which is, the mass bike is over here. When Mr. Brunel says Brookfield Road and Holdong Road, they're over here. So it was purposely cut into that hill to kick the sound this way. So it's a very, very steep grade right there, like I say, about 20, 50 feet high. So you can't build a bigger sound wall. You could build a bigger one.
Right.
Right.
25 feet is very sufficient. As well as a lot of berms and things down in here that just kick the sound around. So when there's high activities, things going on in here, sound is going this way, this way, this way, this way, purposely designed.
Well, two points. I think the difference that the, that the sound barrier is going to stop the sound, because if you do a search on, on sound barriers, you will find that barriers only work on expressways, because the sound travels up over the barriers, and 100 feet later, it starts to curve down, all right? That's my point number one. Point number two, the test that they did do was a joke. It was little kids running small motorbikes that really didn't serve any purpose at all. So to Alicia's point, we'll wait.
You people should read the last noise that the engineers, the town engineers did. Should read his report. We never got to hear it, because Mr. Gordon shut down public debate in the middle of our conversation. So we never got to hear what the sound report was.
You mean responding, the, what the engineer had in response to what?
Yes.
What our consultant said about their engineer.
Mr. Mangis is his name, the engineer. And his report said that the noise was definitely going to exceed the, the state limit.
Through the chair, we're not really here to debate things. I mean, this is not a debating issue. The debate was all done years ago. It's, yeah, this is questions. Sound is sound, and we have, you know, a very good document here that we're going to go by. That I just wanted to put that in.
I, I agree. This has been a very long process, and we've had plenty of discussion on it. I, the control in place to protect you is the Board of Health, who, who's, that's their job to make sure that they don't have dangerous levels of noise. And if, if that happens, then please contact them. And there's, there's really nothing further that we can, we can do. We're not here to look at any more design factors, or we're really here.
Can you explain to me why this new plan that he's revising, it's completely different from all the other studies and plans that they did for Motocross?
And for the sake of formality, do you mind coming up and identifying yourself?
Come on, stand here. I'm Donna Brunel, on Brookfield Road.
Thank you.
So the, all this went to court, and the, there was an agreement that was signed, and we're doing what we need to do per that agreement.
I understand that.
That, so we are, we, everything else, right now, we're, we're, we're doing what we are supposed to be doing. We're, we're moving ahead with the signed legal agreement.
But the last time when they brought a site plan review, okay, we had a public debate meetings for six months.
And then they went to court, and this is what was submitted per the lawyers that was acceptable. So they've done everything that they're supposed to do, and I'm not saying that it's going to be easy to live next to, and we're not, we sympathize, we do. We live next to others.
I'm not asking for sympathy. I'm only asking for you, for you as a board, to do what's right for the town of Charlton.
Legally, we are doing everything that we can do, but our hands are tied. There's a law, there was a lawsuit in place, there was a settlement.
None of those vehicles, those high-impact vehicles, have been approved. This board hasn't even approved them.
She's right in that way. These activities have been approved.
Thank you.
And these were approved pending site plan approval. So if there's high-impact activities that have sound issues.
None of them have been approved.
It was approved through the sound.
Mrs. Vincent, you know that.
Because the sound.
We can't, we can't control what type of vehicle was in there. We only, we, we are, we can only look at the total sound. And if that sound is now violated, it's the Board of Health who.
But you're approving with the site plan approval, you're approving the high-impact vehicles. But you're approving with a site plan approval, you're approving the high-impact vehicles.
As long as they don't e- e- exceed ten decibels. If they do, they get shut down. So, that's, that's kinda.
Know that until a noise study is done.
That is kinda, exactly. And until he actually has an event where these things happen and, and it's measured, you're not gonna get an accurate result of what the sound issues are gonna be. So, he can do another test, he can have, you know, we can have another dozen motorcycles go up there. But until it's an event and it's a full-open race, that's the only way you're gonna know. So, when that happens, it, it's really, it, it's in his best interest to run these events under the law and, and under the, the, the sound requirements. He hates, I'm sure he would hate to get shut down in the middle of a race after he sold three hundred tickets and has to pay everybody back because he, he can't let them race. So, until I think that first race happens and, and it can be measured under full, full, full race. Then at that point, they can shut them down and, and say that's it. And then at that point, I, I mean, if, if it is proven that they violate that sound ordinance, is, is there a requirement for them to come back for site plan approval for mitigation?
No, it's, now it goes to the zoning enforcement officer, right? The, the, the Board of Health to, to deal with, to deal with their legal, to deal with any legal stuff that they need to.
Okay.
It, it's like when somebody puts, has too much trash in their yard, you know, and it, and it goes the legal process. There's a legal process to, if it's constant violations, fines and everything else. Um, but it is out of our, out of our hands, um, like the, the, like parking and, and drainage, that's really our, you know, getting, getting the noise ready done, getting, getting, um.
I think the vehicles should be, if they were part of the site plan review the last time, then they should be part of it this time.
This was predefined by a legal agreement that was, that was reviewed by the, the, the attorneys that, um, negotiated this deal. We, we, we weren't even part of this negotiation. It, honestly, it was walked to us and said, this is what the town signed. Make it happen. And we're just making it, we're following the legal process, um, and, and there's really nothing else we, we can do here. Um, you can, again, it, it was signed, Kurt, was the signer on the agreement? You, you can call him tomorrow morning and have him.
The selectmen.
And the, and the selectmen were a big part of it too. Uh, they all, um, would love your call and to see why they. They, they instructed us to do this. They would, again, love your call.
Because in all fairness, you can put a motorcycle, just take, soup up the muffler and it could be twelve decibels and then you could put up something else, make it, do everything to mitigate it, the sound, and it could be quiet. So, it's all sound reactionary.
Depend this since two thousand and thirteen. This is a long, I, I can, I can cite chapter and verse from clubs all over this country. So, you know, I do know what I'm talking about.
And nobody's saying you don't, truly, but we're just going by what we legally are allowed to go by. Our hands are tied.
And even less because we have a signed agreement on what we were, you know, it.
So, in other words, the town agreed with Mr. Jennings to make you as a board pull the line, uh, approve these vehicles.
Well, it's not the vehicles. What they agreed is that sound is more important than how it gets there. So, they can't go over ten. That's the magic number. No matter what you're driving, it can't go over ten. And they all decided that they didn't want to say they can't use X, Y, Z vehicle because X, Y, Z vehicle, they could soup up to make it twelve decibels. But no matter what vehicle that they put on that site, no matter what, ever, it has to be below ten.
And the same thing with the bigger vehicles. They can put filters on them to keep the sound down on the bigger vehicles too. They can, you can get something that looks like this big bus and they can put filters and, and, and modify the sound, make it louder.
They had a, they had a, um, not, a, a plan to, um, stack seat containers for noise mitigation. What happened to that, Mr. Jennings? No, it's silent.
I'm expecting the board, I'm being silent.
Is, is a big.
If they would like me to answer any question, you certainly will.
I think, I think, I think we just need to, um, is there any other comments that will, um, add to the conversation that hasn't, haven't been brought up?
Yes. The last time I came to, I'm more in Cisco, in Charlton, Mass. The last time I came, I had concerns about people going over the line and defecating on my property. There's one person with a picture of it. There's another picture where somebody did their business and left their buckwipers. They have two instances in one little small area on a mile of, of common boundary. Um, I did call the police. I have here a copy of the police report from that incident if you'd like to see it. Um, that's the stone wall with a boundary line. They bumped and knocked down in places. Here's a jungle gym thing right on the boundary line.
I thought that's where they put the barbed wire. Is that what they're going to do now?
Did this happen prior to that?
Yeah, I'm not interested in barbed wire. I want something to stop the trash from blowing over, which I have all these pictures here of trash. It doesn't exist according to Mr. Jennings the last time I was up here. There's that sign. That's what it looked like on the ground when I tipped it over. It's a handicap sign. This is all my pictures of trash and this is all in one little few hundred-foot area right along the line where I, I actually trimmed the brush back and weed whacked it during the event.
Who takes care of things like this? Who would, who oversees something? Is this the Board of Health also?
I would say, yeah. I brought it to the Board of Health and when I left, Jim told me that it was my fault the trash was there because I didn't let the volunteers go, go on my property with no liability or no workers comp and go pick it up. I don't want the volunteers there any more than I want the trash. This isn't gonna stop and I don't want people tracing around my property every time they have an event because it all blows over there. I need something in place that stops this trash from coming on my property. I want something for a fence that stops the people from coming. Barbed wire isn't it. These ain't cattle that would try and stop.
So, my.
When you have a solar farm, they put a chain link fence around it to keep people out. They don't put barbed wire. Barbed wire is the cheap way of doing it to say, I have a fence.
But could I address that issue? Our intention, our intention by stringing the barbed wire is so that on event days, to alleviate Mr. Cisco's concerns, what we would do is break the orange square grated construction fencing along the open portions of the venue on the top section where he leaves the trash blowing up to his property. Actually, anyone can come in here with pictures of trash on property and say, this came from wherever.
Okay, so, so you'll, so during events, you'll pu, you'll put the, the, the orange fencing or whatever to block it from the trash going through. Um, I, I, I have, my kids have balls and water balloons and they throw them in, in my neighbor's woods and I make my kids go and, um, pick them up. It, I think it's part of, it's, things are gonna happen. You're gonna, you are gonna, on, in the minutes, part of, part of the, um, conditions that during these events, you'll ensure that there are, there is, there is protection. Things may get through. Um, now the barbed wire fence will prevent people from going over there and whatever, whatever they're, they're going to the balcony, whatever on the properties and there'll be fence.
And as, as in added note, when Mr. Cisco voiced his concern, as well as the Board of Health who was on-site for the events and we spoke with Mr. Pilbrook, we stated, if there's ever an issue and someone thinks that some of, some trash from our property blew over, we'd be more than glad to send over employees on Monday morning, not volunteers, our employees with workman's comp, general liability goes. List Mr. Cisco as an additional insurance, whatever his insurance company needed. And we would more than go through and pick up anything that he believed blew over. Naturally, the situation depend, depends to develop between neighbors such as ourselves in this situation where I'm not so sure he has the point he's talking about. And that's my opinion. He has his.
See this picture right here of the stone wall? That's probably more stone wall.